All right, folks, I'd like to call the Planning Commission meeting together for March 27th. Welcome everyone here. I'm Kevin Jeffries, Chairman of the Planning Commission. And before we get started, join me for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, before we get started this morning, as always, let's go ahead and get our staff sworn in. Okay? Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. And anyone here, if you would, make sure you have your cellphones either turned off or on vibrate so we don't interfere with the cameras in the courtroom here. Better check mine. Good to go. All right. I guess the first thing we will do is review our minutes from our February 27th meeting. Commissioners, if I could, let's get a motion on the minutes to approve, and then if there's any additions or corrections, we'll do those after we get a motion on the floor. Got a motion? Okay, motion to approve. Do we have a second? Multiple seconds? All right, now, any discussion or any additions or corrections to the minutes as mailed? Yes, sir?
Page six of eight. I have a question on the first bullet. It says, "Is here as has offered his property." I'm not sure what that means.
Okay.
Well, that's a short way of saying Mr. McAuliffe, who had testified, is here as he has offered his property several times in the past. Not really great grammar, but that's what it is. Maybe he will add, "He is here as he has offered."
I just didn't know what that meant.
That'll clear it up. Let's just add a "he" in the first word.
And the only thing else I had was on page seven, where finding and decision says motion was made by Commissioner King and second by Commissioner Alvey to recommend to fiscal court and legislative cities approval of the short-term rental properties. I didn't see where the vote and the results were for that short-term rental.
Right here at the top.
Actually, that's a good catch.
Yep, we'll add that. The vote count, we'll have to go back and review that. I'm sure I think it was unanimous, but we'll check on that. Anything else?
I can tell you what I think happened when I was editing these. I looked just at the physical form of it, and it looked like the motion was below it in the middle, which was another whole subject.
Okay. Any other additions or corrections? Okay, seen none? Well, now, see, the vote on the motion to approve the minutes as corrected. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed, no. Okay, the minutes from our February 27th meeting have been approved as corrected. All right, with that, we'll move into our first docketed item, and I'll call on Ms. Fox, if she would, to read the docket, please.
Docket PZ-18-002. Application has been filed by New Singular Wireless PSC LLC DBA AT&amp;T Mobility for approval to construct a 195-foot telecommunications tower on 43.65 acres located at 6901 Oregon Creek Road in unincorporated Oldham County.
All right, Ms. Alvey will introduce her docket this morning for us.
Good morning. Amy Alvey with Oldham County Planning and Development Services. As Ms. Fox just stated, this is a request for a cell tower location at 6901 Oregon Creek Road in Pendleton. The mailing address is Pendleton. It is located in Oldham County, just for clarification purposes. The parcel ID is 5116A. It is, existing zoning is AG1 Agricultural and CO1 Conservation. The total acreage of the tract is 43.65 acres, and the area that is being leased by the applicant is 1.229 acres. This is an aerial view of the property. This is just the area view that shows the driveways and structures. And then this is the existing zoning, and you'll see again, the green area is CO1 Conservation, and the light green area is AG1 Agricultural. This is the entrance drive into the site. This is the west view along Oregon Creek Road, so this is going down toward, street just slipped my name, what it's called. This is the sign posting that is required through KRS-100 of the posting of the cell tower site. Ridge Road, it'll come to me eventually, Ridge Road. This is the west adjoining property, so you can see there's a little site map down here at the bottom corner to give you orientation of where the adjoining properties are. This is the south view, which is across the street from the proposed site. This is the east view, looking back Oregon Creek Road, which takes you back to 42. This is the east adjoining property owners, which is also the same as the adjoining properties as highlighted here in red. They own, the same family owns both tracts of land. The planning office was officially notified on February 13th of 2018 for the request to be on the March 27th, 2018 agenda, making the 60-day ruling deadline April 14th of 2018. Notices were mailed to adjoining property owners by the applicant via certified mail on February 13th of 2018, and notices of the Planning Commission hearing were mailed by myself to the adjoining property owners on March 18th. All documentation required by Division 340 antenna towers for telecommunications services has been provided by the applicant and included in your packet. The applicant is proposing to construct a cell tower that would be 190 feet tall with a four-foot tall lightning arruster attached to the top for a total height of 199 feet. The plan also includes a concrete foundation and shelter, or cabinets, to house radio electronics equipment, electronics equipment and other equipment as well. The applicant is proposing a 30-foot wide leased area used for ingress and egress and utilities from the existing driveway at Oregon Creek Road, and includes a 12-foot gravel access drive to the tower site. So this kind of gives you an overview of the location of the cell tower, along with the leased space for the drive. The 30-foot access ingress will be used for ingress and egress. It'll have a 12-foot gravel drive that will be widened and improved as needed to get back to the cell tower site. This is the site plan. You'll see here, highlighted in yellow, that is the location of the monopole for the cell tower, and then there's also an 80 by 80 equipment cabinet, and then there are also three other areas for future antenna tower co-locations. The applicant is proposing an eight-foot tall chain-link fence with three rows of barbed wire atop for a total height of nine feet to secure the site. Landscaping is shown under tab B, page C3 of the application, and outlines the 20-foot wide landscape buffer. The applicant is proposing to plant six-foot tall evergreen trees, eight feet on center. The mature height of the trees is a minimum of 20 feet. That did include the required landscape regulations according to Section 340-080, Item 2, which the applicant's proposal does meet. So this is the landscape plan. These are the trees in question, and then highlighted in purple is the fence. It looks like it shifted a little bit, my picture, the purple did, but. The vertical profile sketch of the proposed tower, which is located under tab B, C4, shows no lighting on top of the tower, and also shows location of three additional antennas for future carriers to co-locate. The applicant has prepared and submitted a geotechnical engineering report, which is Exhibit D, which indicates that three test boring samples were done at the base of the proposed tower. This is the cell tower profile. You'll see that it is 195 feet tall, and then on the top it has a four-foot lightning Whenever a tower is taller than the distance from its base to the nearest property line, the applicant must furnish the commission with certification from an engineer registered in the Commonwealth of Kentucky that the tower would stand winds of 70 miles per hour. The proposed tower is located approximately 525 feet from the west property line and 268 feet from the northeast property line. The certification is located behind tab C of the application and states the proposed foundation plan is designed for base wind speeds of 89 miles per hour with no ice and 30 miles per hour with 3/4-inch radial ice. So this is the distance to the property lines. You'll see again, 268 feet from the right, 525 from the left, and approximately 1,051 feet from the front. In reference to the comprehensive plan, Goal E2 number five states new telecommunications towers should be located and designed to minimize impacts to existing trees and vegetation, as well as visual and land use impacts. Permit new telecommunications towers and utility substations provided that, and then there are four items that are listed there. And then if you also look at Goal BI1, to promote business and industry development that is compatible with Oldham County's vision statement to provide an increased and balanced property tax base, more jobs in Oldham County. Objective BI14 says Oldham County will facilitate broadband infrastructure and telecommunications availability for residential, governmental, and business segments of the county. So in summary, the applicant is requesting approval to construct a 195-foot tall telecommunications tower on 43.65 acres located at 6901 Oregon Creek Road in Pendleton. And that is all that I have.
Thank you, Ms. Alvey. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Oh, Bonnet, sorry?
Just for clarification, the storage shed, that's 80 inches by 80 inches?
Yes, not 80 feet by 80 feet, correct.
Okay. And you said that there would be no lighting on top of the tower?
Not required to have a light on the top of it.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any further questions before we move into the presentation? Thank you, Ms. Alvey. And I'll call on Mr. Pike.
Before you leave, if you could show me on an idiot-proof basis how I do this, please.
Just arrow.
Got it.
If you want to draw, just draw and then hit the bottom corner.
Cool, thanks.
All right, Mr. Pike, welcome back to Oldham County.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, it's a pleasure to appear before you again. It's also a pleasure to appear in what is, I believe, the finest public hearing room for any planning commission in Kentucky, when it is not filled with people. So, Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of ways I can proceed here today. As you might expect, we have come prepared to do the full monte, if necessary. Would it be out of order for me to ask the chair to inquire whether there are any opponents here today, since that might influence the nature and scope of my presentation?
Let me ask counsel, is that any problem? That would be fine, proceed.
Well, no, are there any, is there anyone here in opposition?
Okay.
Well, in that case, I can distribute hearing binders and do my full PowerPoint, if you would like, and I'm certainly ready to do that, or I can just address questions, or I can do something in between those two. What's the pleasure of the commission?
Why don't you do just a brief, you know, kind of a summary, and then as we move through into the process, you know, into the hearing, if we have more in-depth questions, then we can, you know, hopefully, address those at that time. And I would like to say, if you anticipate anyone here is with you testifying, I'd like to go ahead and get them sworn in.
Absolutely. I don't, just in case they need to answer questions, Mr. Katz is here with me.
Okay, we'll get him sworn in, and then we'll get him to name an address later on. Ms. Fox?
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Proceed, sir.
So, the fact that we are here with a large number of homes in this area, and there's no one here in opposition, speaks volumes to the quality of the siding that we've done. We can't always achieve this type of popularity for a new proposal, but when we can, it's gratifying. That didn't happen by accident here. It happened based upon the fact that we took your regulations very seriously, and we did the best we could to do a well-planned site that goes far beyond the setbacks and other development criteria that are set forth in your own regulations and in the state statutes. There are a few things that I would like to kind of highlight here. First of all, if you've, of course, tried to make an AT&amp;T call in this area, you understand the need all too vividly. This is a chronically underserved area, and to kind of help demonstrate that, there's a couple of slides from my PowerPoint that I'd like to highlight. The first one is this current demonstration of coverage, where what we're looking for is green, and you can see that's in very, very short supply. If we are fortunate enough to receive your approval here today, since this is the last approval that's necessary for the construction of this facility, that's what we convert the quality of coverage to in this vicinity. And of course, that green, I'll talk just very briefly at the end of my shortened presentation regarding why that's so mission-critical for our customers and the community as a whole. Let's skip ahead. We've, of course, exhausted all co-location alternatives. There are none within our search area. It's also worth noting, Mr. Katz is here to address property values if necessary, although we don't view that as a grounds for disapproval of cell tower applications. Of course, you always want to follow the advice of your own attorney, but from our perspective, that's not the case. We have taken the time to submit a report from Mr. Katz, who's the current president of the Kentucky Chapter of the Appraisal Institute, indicating that this facility would have no adverse effect on real estate values. One issue that was raised by Laura just a couple of minutes ago was whether this facility will be lit. It has, since we can accomplish our objectives by configuring it just under 200 feet, that's exactly what we did, so no aviation lighting is required and none will be deployed. A couple of other items I'd like to address is, I would not be so bold as an advocate to refer to this as a short structure. It is not, but by cell tower standards, it is. If you kind of take a look, there are currently 14 FCC-registered constructed towers in Oldham County. Thirteen of those 14 are taller than this one. Now, that doesn't make this a short structure, but if we put it in perspective, the kind of the average height of those registered towers is 376 feet. That's 177 feet taller than our proposed tower, almost twice as tall on average. So, again, we can accomplish our objective with a tower that's configured under 200, which does not require aviation lighting, so we thought the responsible thing to do was just that. Of course, all notice, requirements have been met. This commission, I think, is, again, has excellent legal counsel. You should, of course, follow his advice in these issues, but I think we've been through previously what the significant limitations are from our perspective on this commission's deliberations associated with federal law when it comes to issues like aesthetics, health effects, et cetera, none of which can effectively be considered by a planning commission, in our view, in the Sixth Circuit. I think it's also worth noting a couple of new items that I'd like to bring to your attention, if I can find it. This will be the first time I've done this for you, so there are a couple of things that we are extremely excited about. In this deployment that I'm working on, I was sharing with Mr. Urban prior to this, it's the largest wireless deployment that my office has ever worked on, and it's for AT&amp;T, and one of the kind of key, and there are a couple of just key technologic innovations that are associated with these sites, all of which will be deployed at this site. The first one is that this will be one of the first sites in Kentucky which will deploy FirstNet. And if you are not familiar with that, right after the terrorist attacks of 9/11, there was a presidential commission impaneled to study ways in which the country could be better prepared to respond to events of that type in the future. One of their key recommendations was to establish a unified national communication system for all first responders that would be secure and is also scalable, because one of the key problems after 9/11 at the terrorist strike sites was that effectively first responders were locked out of the wireless communication system because so many individual citizens were overloading it with issues of personal concern. It has taken the country this long, but last year, one provider was selected to provide that service nationwide. It is AT&amp;T, and this site will be one of the first to deploy that technology and make it available for first responders. We're going to be, of course, retrofitting other sites throughout the Commonwealth of Kentucky, since the state has opted into that communication system, but this will be one of the first that's constructed with it. Now, the other one is a proprietary system that we're particularly proud of, that will be deployed at this site, and it's our fixed wireless local loop service. And we're, and we're excited about it, not just for counties like this, but in particular in areas in eastern Kentucky, which have been chronically underserved when it comes to high-speed internet options for homes or businesses. What we will do is we have a dedicated set of antennas that uses a dedicated set of our high-frequency spectrum that we recently purchased from the FCC, which allows us, if you place a small panel antenna, about so big, on your home or business, to provide you with high-speed internet service. And even in those areas that currently have providers, in many cases, there isn't effective competition, this will change that dynamic totally, because if you are within two and a half miles of this facility, we'll be offering high-speed internet service. And of course, that's separate from the normal wireless coverage that you get with your individual wireless phones. And kind of just a couple of other quick items, and then I'll sit down with great style. The first one is to kind of remember that these applications are different, we would argue, than other types of applications that you get. Although we are a private company, we serve customers, and we serve the community, and we are registered as a utility with the Kentucky Public Service Commission. And over the years, when I've been presenting these cases, I've tracked a couple of metrics that underscore why that is so critical. The first one is, is that approximately 70% of all 911 calls are now placed from wireless phones, not from landline phones. And the National Health Interview Survey, which is conducted each year by a consortium of federal health agencies, including the National Institutes for Health and the Centers for Disease Control, and they have to do this study because it's critical as public health agencies, since they're reaching out to the public to make sure that the bias, that the sampling that they're doing is not inadvertently biased. I've watched these numbers climb over the years. Last year, we passed two critical thresholds. The first one is now over half of all homes have only a wireless phone, no landline phone. And the second one is over 60% of all children live in homes just like that. Now, when you hold those two stats in mind, and you go back to that screen that I showed you earlier, which shows our existing coverage versus what it takes to provide reliable first-time, every-time, in-building coverage, you understand that this is not just another zoning application. This is about public safety, it's about public health, and it's about public welfare as well. We take those obligations seriously. It's one of the reasons that we are building hundreds of new cell towers in this state, in those areas where we cannot reach our customers otherwise. This is one of those sites. Anytime we can co-locate, we do, because of course, it's always a pleasure to appear before you folks, but we wouldn't have to do any of this if we were co-locating, and it would be a lot cheaper. But we can't without this site, and we need your approval today in order to improve that quality of service for us, our current customers, and the customers we hope to have. And, Mr. Chairman, that's the shortest version I think I've done in a long time.
Okay.
If there are any questions, I'll be glad to try to handle them, and if not, I have Mr. Katz to assist me.
Okay, we'll open it up here just shortly for, you know, questions from the commission. And I do want to ask again, just to make sure, as far as the hearing presentation, is there anyone here that has testimony or questions opposing the application? I think I didn't see any hands go up a while ago, but I do need to ask. Don't see anybody. With that...
If I could, before I wrap up, just, of course, everything we filed previously, I'd like to have introduced as part of the hearing record.
Okay, all right, yes, sir. All right, that'll be, we'll do that, and then I guess now we'll move into questioning the applicant by the commission. And let me start off, I've got a couple of questions, if I could. Will this tower site accommodate 5G LTE?
Absolutely. This is built to be state-of-the-art, and of course, we also can accommodate up to at least three additional providers as co-locators, and we have existing master lease agreements with all other franchise holders in this market.
Okay, and do you have, let's see, a timeframe, is when this, you know, if this is approved, when that construction would start on this tower?
Current projections are that this would happen within the next nine months.
Okay, all right.
Again, if we're fortunate enough to receive your approval.
Okay, and I think that's all the questions I had. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Pike? Yes, sir. I guess we'll go with Mr. Horton, and then we'll move Mr. Douglas.
That with me?
Yes.
Thank you. I did look over all this stuff, and I've promptly forgotten most of it. So, what would happen in the future if someone, they sold property and they wanted to build a home within the radius of the requirements now under this application, distance of home to tower? Is that possible, or is that already worked out in your lease?
Well, I would, I would hate to speak for that legal conclusion, and you would, of course, want to turn to your own attorney and staff. My view is that it would not affect it, but that's, would be their advice to offer.
So, I think what he's saying is that if someone came in to approve a subdivision or something, the fact that there's a cell phone tower there would have to be taken into consideration by the Planning Commission.
Yes, that would...
But it doesn't affect the use of the property, except to the extent that we would have to consider that.
Okay.
And secondly, it may have been in here, and I've probably forgotten that, too. The radius of service, I know there's a plant here, but is the radius that's drawn out, or of the approximate service that this tower will provide?
You know, I wish I could give you an exact number. The radius of service for the fixed wireless loop service, that's the new home internet service, is approximately two and a half miles. It is typically about five miles for the actual coverage.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Douglas?
This is more of a technical question. I don't know if somebody here from Sabre Communication is here, or will you be able to answer them?
I'll give it a shot.
What was the decision on the monopole as a resistance of the lattice-type antenna?
Oh, why we chose that? It's an issue that we typically don't address in hearings like this, but our experience has been, from an aesthetic perspective, that more urbanized communities like this seem to prefer them.
Okay, because I guess the reason why I asked that is because I guess I read in the report, there was some concerns on the geotech report about the rock issue of the soul, about drilling down into the soul. They were going to hit rock at three feet, nine inches, or something like that?
Well, we can adapt foundation designs to fit any location, and of course...
Right, and I'm not an engineer, so I can't answer this.
And in this instance, of course, the geotechnical, you know, the foundation design relied upon the geotechnical borings, and it's stamped and sealed by an engineer. Now, I have some math grades in school to demonstrate why I'm a lawyer today.
Me, too.
So I don't know that I could drill, I could get, pardon the pun, drill into all that with you in detail, but it has been certified by Kentucky licensed geotech engineer as being suitable.
Okay.
And no blasting would be required in that construction process.
That's what I was going to get at next. Was it going to be forced drilling or blasting?
No blasting, drilling.
Okay, and then the last question is, at the widening of the entrance off of Oregon Creek Road to the facility?
Say again, I'm sorry.
The widening of the entrance. It appeared on the site developmental plan, there was a water meter pretty close to that site. Was that going to be moved, or were you just working around that water meter?
I do not know. Certainly, in the construction phase of this, we would be getting an encroachment permit, and we obviously also consult, you know...
Water company.
...to make certain that we're not running afoul of any existing underground structures.
And what was the, when the testing was done about this location, what was the anticipated coverage of customers that would be anticipated adding this tower to that location?
I do not know the answer to that. And I'm not sure AT&amp;T would know exactly. What we're kind of in the business in right now with the very large number of sites that are being deployed is provide, is to try to provide ubiquitous service. That's our goal. And so, I don't know that we're necessarily counting heads all the time.
Was it done mostly for FirstNet?
No. No. This is, this is, this is a prosperous, growing community, and for good or ill, it will not be my last visit to you this year.
Okay. I just have one last question, and I'm sitting here stalling because it was most important. Environmental-wise, and I saw in the report that there was not going to be any clearing of the existing vegetation or trees in the area because of the bats. Was that correct, or is there going to be clearing of it?
Well, here's how that works. Of course, we're required to do a limited NEPA, not because we get any federal money. We give a lot of money to the federal government, but it's because we have a federal license. And anytime you have a bat habitat, and those are very, very, very common in Kentucky, we run into it all the time. What that means is, is that we cannot clear during their nesting season. It's fine to clear otherwise, but we can't clear during their nesting season, because we do not want to disturb the mother and baby bats during those times. So, we're obligated, under our NEPA approval, not to clear during those times, but we are authorized to clear otherwise. Because as soon as they vacated those nesting locations, then you know you're not going to interrupt their breeding cycle.
All righty. Mr. Sam?
I will tell you, that is the first bat breeding question that I've had this year, so...
I saw it in the report.
Oh, no, no, it's great. It's great. I appreciate it. Gives me another war story. What did you do today, Dave? But I talked about bat breeding.
Mr. Finney?
Good morning. This is a monopole structure. Does it require cabling? What is the support of the height of the structure versus what we have when we went, like, we had the one approved over in Centerfield that's actually a trust-type?
Okay. And this kind of goes to the same sort of issues that he was asking. The overall width of the facility is significantly smaller than a self-support tower, because a self-support tower, in order to gain its structural integrity, has to have its legs more nearly spread the further down it goes. So, and again, I don't necessarily acknowledge aesthetics as a valid issue for planning commission review, but the arguments that are traditionally presented in favor of monopoles is that, A, they have a lower visual cross-section, and B, since the cabling is installed internally, it's less busy visually. Those are the terms that are often used by people who study these factors. Now, if what I'm hearing is that this commission in the future prefers self-support towers, then we can certainly start reconfiguring. But the limiting factor that often requires, and in your prior deliberations has required self-support towers, is that as a practical matter, the kind of effective limit of the height of monopoles is around 200 feet. Once you get much above that, the physics and the metallurgy issues start working against you. Because in order to get taller than that, you have to have a lot more steel built into it, and the structure has to get very massive very quickly, which also makes it immensely expensive. And at some point, you lose the advantages, from an aesthetic perspective, of the monopole because it has to get so much bigger simply to support its own weight, let alone the weight associated with carriers. So, from what you often see in planning journals, and you might talk to Mr. Urban about this, is you see scenarios where, in many cases, communities express a preference for monopoles for structures that are 200 feet or shorter. And after that, what you'll typically then see is self-support towers being used. And since the vast majority of the towers that are deployed in this community are, in fact, taller than 200 feet, that's probably why you have seen a number of lattice towers previously. Does that address your question?
Yes, generally, but still, was there, is there, like, cabling that goes way out from the tower on this tower to support it?
Oh, no. No, there are no guidelines.
No guidelines.
There are no guidelines associated with this.
That's what I was...
And the cabling that is used for the antennas is deployed internally inside of the monopole.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I misconstrued your question.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We just want to make sure, too, that, you know, we're not, I don't think we're requesting, you know, guy tower, I mean, guy wires or anything on, especially on this structure or whatever. I mean, we're just curious.
Yeah.
And... Right. And to correct, too, I think, Ms. Finney, you'd said that the tower at Centerfield was a, you know, was not a monopole, but I believe the one that, the latest one that we approved is a monopole at 295 feet there at...
But it's a, it's a... Kind of like, like, it's a trust structure. It's not, it's not single pole.
Single pole. Okay.
Single pole going up.
Okay. All right. That's, that's fine. Okay. One other question I had before I ask any other commissioners. On the infrastructure, do you all have, are you going to have to have fiber optic put in out there as far as, you know, to get the signal out? I mean, to get everything out there?
I mean, there are backups if we can't, but yes, we would anticipate deploying fiber optics at this location.
And do you have enough electricity, enough power there to run the tower?
Absolutely.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, commissioners? Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. Mr. Faubie?
Just one, out of curiosity, and if it's appropriate, how long the lease term is taken out on this?
Well, that's proprietary, but I can tell you the norm. The norm is that these things run out 30 years with rights of renewal. I will also tell you, I have been doing this more years than I care to acknowledge, and I have never decommissioned one. That's not just because it's, I haven't been doing it 30 years, but...
Okay. Any other questions? Ms. Crosby?
Sorry I'm late this morning, but it wasn't due to, because I wasn't here. The question I have asked, you said they normally last, well, I guess, like, 30 years or whatever. What happens after that, when it's no longer, or if that ever happens, if that it is no longer needed? What happens to that pole, to just lay there?
Under the terms of our lease, and also under the terms of state law, one of the kind of innovative things buried in the Kentucky revised statutes, we are obligated, if it is abandoned, to take it down.
And the property returns to the...
The norm is that we take it down to just beneath the surface.
And there's also a bond that you pose for that removal.
Sure. There's a lot of safeguards that are built into the state statutes on that issue. But again, never had one of those yet.
Okay. Any further questions? Yes, sir. Mr. Douglas?
I know this is, may and may not be relevant, but do you know of approximately line of sight, distance-wise, the coverage it would, because apparently the elevation is pretty high there, I would think. So, would that cover part of Indiana, Tremble County also, coverage-wise?
No, we're careful, well, first of all, I mean, the norm from a location like this would be somewhere between two and a half to five miles, and it varies based on sector. There are kind of two questions that I'm hearing there. The first one is visually how far, and second, coverage-wise, how far. We could probably make it cover even further, but we have to integrate it with the existing network. So, in many cases, we purposefully downtilt antennas and the like so that we don't interfere with adjoining sites. The science of this is, many people think, well, taller would be better because you can cover more area. In fact, the great, the great challenges today aren't just coverage, it is also capacity for these systems. So, we have to make certain that we don't cover too much area, because if we do, then it overloads that system and interferes with the nearby ones. You know, I'm doing many types of applications these days. A significant percentage of them are infill, where we already have good coverage, but we have to split up existing cell sites. Now, the second question is one on visually, where you can see it from. And I will tell you, that is a really complicated question. I kind of went to school on, if I digress too much, tell me, Mr. Chairman, I'll stop. Kind of went to school on this a few months ago at Planning and Development Services, PDS. It's kind of like Prince, you know, the guy formerly known as, well, it's kind of like formerly known as Northern Kentucky Area Planning Commission, which arguably has the most advanced GIS system in the state. And they've been at it a very long time, and have got a substantial budget for it. And they're capable now internally of doing full projections on where you can see stuff based on, you know, LiDAR mapping, in which you can project the actual height of structures on the ground and the like, and show the shadowing. It's really pretty Star Trek stuff. But I was pretty stunned when they did a projection of one of our towers, that it showed areas very close in which you couldn't see the tower, based on shadowing, and then areas much further away where you could see it periodically. So, the visual impact portion of this is a much more complicated question than you would think, and many people who are fairly close will not be able to see it based on vegetation, intervening hills, perspective, and all of those factors.
My question was more or less not just the visual of the antenna or the pole itself. It was more of, because a lot of, I'm sure, residents in Odom County or even driving on 42, going into Tremble County, you know, if they have AT&amp;T service, they don't have good service going through there. So, the idea that most people see an antenna way up, setting up on top of a hill, they believe that they're going to get great service at that point, so...
If they can see the tower that readily, they will.
Right.
They absolutely will.
So, that's what the emphasis I was trying to get you to say, is that...
And I'm sorry I wouldn't read it better.
I'm not worried about the actual visual sight of the pole. I was more like, because your coverage map shows the increase of coverage area in Tremble, and also, you know, deeply greatly improves in Odom County. So, you know, I'm sure that customers, even on Highway 42, driving and going into Tremble County, is going to see a great improvement.
And there's no doubt about that. If you look at this coverage map, and this is our after-projection, you can see the scale at the bottom lists a total of one mile. And, of course, green is our ideal, because that's full in-building coverage period. But even best signal levels are improved dramatically in a wide area based on the deployment of this facility. I'm sorry if I wasn't better in my response.
That was the answer I wanted.
Okay.
All right. Any additional questions? All right. Seeing none. Mr. Pike, we'll, final statement. Do you have a final statement, sir?
I meant what I said before. It is always a pleasure to appear in front of this commission, and I appreciate the questions, which are smart and to the point. We're grateful for the opportunity to provide improved coverage in this community. AT&amp;T is making a just truly massive commitment statewide to dramatically improve its network and to provide some new innovative services. We're gratified that one of the first facilities that will deploy these new technologies will be here in Odom County. If you see fit, to vote yes in a few minutes.
All right. Thank you, sir. That completes your application?
Yeah, it does, sir.
Okay.
Oh, one last thing. I want to thank, of course, Mr. Urban and Ms. Alvey for all their hard work. I also, we are willing to accept the binding elements that are suggested in the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, sir. All right. With that, docket PZ 18002 has been completed, and as always, I'll call on Mr. Urban and Mr. Carter to outline what is being requested at this point, sir.
Thank you. On page three of your staff report, highlighted in yellow, you have kind of your directive related to cell phone tower cases. The applicant has submitted a uniform application to construct a cell tower antenna, and you either, you review the uniform application in light of its agreement with the comprehensive plan and locally adopted zoning ordinances, and make a final decision today, and we will write that final decision to the applicant after that. On the next page, page four, if, in fact, the planning commission disapproves the proposed construction, you're really just supposed to state the reasons for disapproval in writing and make suggestions which, in the planning commission's opinion, would better accomplish the objectives of the comprehensive plan and ordinances. You know, again, typically, we don't necessarily reject these, but if you find some reason to, you have to state very specifically so we can write to the applicant. And there are, again, three binding elements, starting on page two. The guarantee of removal in case of abandonment shall be irrevocable. The second one is any proposed lighting shall meet FAA regulations in accordance with Section 340-080 of the zoning regulations, and we've heard that they won't deploy any lighting. And then the antenna tower shall be maintained in either a galvanized steel finish or painted light gray or light blue in color. They did also submit a landscape plan, which we review during the application process, and it appears to comply with our regulations.
Okay. Mr. Carter, anything else that needs to be added at this point?
No.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard Mr. Urban outline what's being requested here. I'll now open it up for consideration of the commission, and I'd like to get a motion to begin with, and then we'll, if we get a second, then we'll open it up for discussion. So, do we have a motion on docket PZ 18002? Yes, sir, Mr. Horton.
The applicant has addressed all of the concerns and questions asked by the planning commissions, and in consideration of our role in reviewing facilitations... No. In...
Yes.
Yeah, in considering our role in review of facilitations of this type, I'd like to make a motion to approve docket number PZ 18-002 for the cell tower and all of the three binding elements listed in the application.
Okay. Mr. Carter, is that adequate?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor? Mr. Ham, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Do we have a second? Okay. Multiple seconds. All right. Now, any discussion? Any discussion on the motion to approve docket PZ 18002 to construct a new cellular wireless antenna, 195 feet, on 6901 Oregon Creek Road? Okay. Seeing no discussion? I'll ask Ms. Fox if she would do the vote, and this is a motion to approve.
Yes.
Mr. Queen?
Yes.
Mr. Merska?
Yes.
Mr. Neal?
Yes.
Mr. May?
Yes.
Mr. Coggi?
Yes.
Mr. Douglas?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
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 All right.
Thank you. Well, the docket PZ 18002, the motion to approve the cell tower, has been approved on a vote of 12 to 0. Mr. Pike?
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. All right. With that, you all need, let's take about a 10-minute recess before we move into our next docketed item. Well, that was a lot easier than a couple of them we've had.